All right, if all Town Meeting members would kindly take their seats. Just a reminder, the seats in the front at the tables are for the Town Meeting members, and open seats in the rear of the auditorium for any visitors or guests. All right, please rise at this time if you would, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would remain standing just for a moment of silence for our American men and women protecting our freedoms here and around the world. Thank you, please have a seat. All right, our Tellers for tonight, Mr. Rosetti from Precinct Two and Ms. Herman Durant from Precinct One, the Tellers will please come forward and be sworn to their duties.
Do you swear to faithfully and partially perform your duties as a Teller for Saugus Town Meeting to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. Town Meeting members, please raise your right hand, and I would ask if the Tellers would take account for attendance. Twenty and seventeen, that's thirty-seven plus the moderator, we do have a quorum. Please put all cell phones and other electronic devices in silent mode. Members are reminded that the use of electronic devices during meetings is restricted to viewing documents or websites pertinent to the articles before us, and texting, gaming, or other uses are discouraged. At this time, the Town Clerk will call the roll.
Bartolo.
Here.
Bell is not here. Berubi.
Here.
Brown.
Yeah.
Camuso.
Yes.
Chapores.
Yeah.
Connors. Connors. Costello.
Here.
Codham.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Curry.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Delios.
Here.
Doherty.
Here.
Dunn is not here. Federico.
Here.
Ferrari.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Grabowski.
Yeah.
Herman Durant.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Kelly is not here. Long.
Yeah.
LaPresti. LaPresti. Minugian.
Yeah.
McCarthy is not here. McCullough.
Here.
Meredith.
Yeah.
Mureshi.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Pelashi. Pelashi. Palumba.
President.
Panetta.
Here.
Panico.
Yeah.
Hayolini is not here. Polente.
President.
Rikinnick.
Here.
Ring.
Here.
Rosetti.
President.
Sacco. Sacco. Shenna.
Here.
Scuzzarella.
Here.
Schalkowski.
Here.
Spencer.
Here.
Straznick. Straznick. Taligan. Taligan. Thompson is not here. Wallace.
Yeah.
Whitcomb.
Yeah.
Worthling.
Here.
Thirty-eight. There were five that caught, or six, that contacted both Steve and myself, sending their apologies that they were unable to make it tonight, and they were on the board when you got here.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Our first order of business is accepting the minutes of the previous session. While I do have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting available, if anyone needs to review them, since a copy is posted on the Town website shortly after each meeting for all to review, and knowing that you're all diligent about reviewing them online, if there's no obligation, if there's no objection, I'm sorry, the minutes of the last session will be accepted by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the minutes are accepted as posted. When recognized to speak, all speakers are asked to step up to the podium. Town Meeting members will please state their name and precinct represented. Other Town officers or employees state their name and position in the town, and Saugus citizens just state your name and address. This way, everyone at home can identify with who they're hearing. We will be observing the appropriate time limits for speakers per Section 208 of the Town Bylaws. While we've closed out the annual warrant for this year, we do have one special warrant containing one zoning article remaining before us, and we do have a recommendation from the Planning Board on it, so we should be able to finalize that this evening and close out our business for the summer. Next order of business would be to hear acts, reports of committees, if there are any committees that wish to report out at this time. Okay, seeing none. As a courtesy to the Planning Board, Ms. Hickman moves Article One for consideration. To see if the Town of Saugus will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Saugus by adding new Article Twenty-three, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, or MCMOD, for the purpose of complying with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-eight, subsection three A, multifamily zoning as a right, as of right in MBTA communities, and its implementing regulation, seventy-seven sixty C.M.R. seventy-two, as herein stated, ought to see what other action the Town wishes to take in the matter. Section Twenty-three One, Purpose. The purpose of the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, or MCMOD, is to allow multifamily housing as a right in accordance with MGL, Chapter Forty-eight, subsection three A, multifamily zoning as a right in MBTA communities, and its implementing regulation, seventy-seven sixty C.M.R. seventy-two, of the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, as may be amended. Section Twenty-three Two, Establishment and Applicability. Twenty-three Two One, District Location.
Why, let me make a motion that we can wait until we get this?
Can't do that.
Yes.
Nope, for the, for the folks at home and for everyone, if, basically, if we read the reading of it into the minutes, someone could say that they didn't know what they were voting on, which would negate the vote if they went back and looked at the video and we didn't actually present the article in full. So, we will, but when it comes time to vote, I'm not doing this again, so pay attention. All right? The MCMOD is an overlay district composed of three sub-districts that is superimposed over the underlying zoning district. The land included in the MCMOD are the following Town of Saugus tax parcels, as well as that portion of the layout of Broadway, Massachusetts, Route One, that abuts the included tax parcels. Under Sub-District A, on ten D, oh 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 two, lots one, six, and twelve. On eleven C, oh oh one oh, lot six. On eleven D, oh 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 one, lot two. On eleven D, oh 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 two, lots nine and eleven. Sub-District B, on ten D, oh 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 one, lots two, three, four, and six. And in Sub-District C, on ten D, oh 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 two, lots five and eight. Twenty-three point two, two, Effectiveness. The, this MCOD bylaw shall be effective upon its approval by Saugus Town Meeting, but the election to develop property under the MCOD zoning hereby created may not be made until such date as EOHLC has issued a finding determining that this MCMOD bylaw fully satisfies the Town of Saugus' obligations under Section Three A of the Zoning Act. Applicants seeking to develop land within the MCMOD may elect to be governed by this requirement of the MCMOD, or by complying with all applicable requirements of the underlying zoning district. Where an applicant develops, elects to develop land under the MCMOD, said land shall thenceforth, thenceforth be governed by the provisions of the MCMOD, and neither the applicant nor successors entitled may change such election. Where the MCMOD authorizes use and dimensional controls not otherwise allowed in the underlying district or any applicable overlay district, the provisions of the MCMOD shall control. Section Twenty-three Two Three, Underlying Zoning. The MCMOD is an overlay district superimposed on underlying zoning districts of the zoning bylaws. The regulations for use dimensions and all other provisions of the zoning bylaws governing the respective underlying zoning districts shall remain in full force, except as modified or superseded by the MCMOD for uses allowed as of right in the MCMOD. Uses that are not identified in this article are governed solely by the requirements of the underlying zoning district. Sub-Districts. The MCMOD contains the following sub-districts as referenced in Section Twenty-three Two One herein A, B, and C. Density Protection. No other provision or requirements in this zoning bylaw shall reduce the effective density of a multifamily housing project below the units per acre specified in for each sub-district within the MOD in Section Twenty-three point five Dimensional Standards. The Planning Board shall have the authority to waive or modify any conflicting dimensional site plan review or design standards imposed by other sections of the zoning bylaws if such standards would result in a reduction of the Section Twenty-three point five Dimensional Standards based density for multifamily housing within the MOD. Section Two point four Building Moratorium Multifamily Dwelling shall not apply to the MCMOD. Section Twenty-three Three, Definitions. For purposes of this article, the following definition shall apply. Affordable Unit. A multifamily housing unit that is subject to the use, to a use restriction recorded on its chain of title limiting the sale price or rent, or limiting occupancy to an individual or household of a specified income or both. Affordable Housing. Housing that contains affordable units as defined by this article. Applicant. A person, business, or organization that applies for a building permit, site plan review, or special permit. Area Medium Income. Median Income. The median income, family income for the metropolitan statistical region that includes the Town of Saugus as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. As of right. Development that may proceed under the zoning in place at time of application without the need for a special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. Building Coverage. The maximum area of the lot that can be attributed to the footprints of the built, footprint of the buildings, principal and accessory on that lot, and including any building overhangs that exceed the building footprint. Building coverage does not include surface parking. Compliance Guidelines. Compliance Guidelines for Multifamily Zoning Districts under Article Three A of the Zoning Act, as further revised or amended from time to time. DCH, I'm sorry, DHCD. The Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or any successor agency. Development Standards. Provisions of Section G General Development Standards made applicable to projects within the MCMOD. EOHLC. The Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, DHCD's successor agency. Lot. An area of land with defined boundaries that is used or available for use as the site of a building or buildings. MBTA. Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. Mixed-Use Development. Development containing a mix of residential uses and non-residential uses, including commercial, institutional, industrial, and other, or other uses. Multifamily Housing. A building with three or more residential dwellings, units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential unit in each building. Multifamily Zoning District. A zoning district, either a base district or an overlay district in which multiple family housing is allowed as of right. Open Space. Contiguous undeveloped land within a parcel boundary. Parking. Structured. A structure in which vehicle parking is accommodated on multiple stories, a vehicle parking area that is underneath all or part of any story or of a structure, or a vehicle parking area that is not underneath a structure but is entirely covered and has a parking surface at least eight feet below the grade. Structured parking does not include surface parking or carports, including solar carports. Parking. Surface. One or more parking spaces without a built structure above the space, a solar panel designed to be installed above a surface parking space does not count as a built structure for the purpose of this definition. Residential Dwelling Unit. A single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Section Three A. Section Three A of the Zoning Acts, Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-eight. Site Plan Review Authority. The Town of Saugus Planning Board. Special Permit Granting Authority. The Special Permit Granting Authority shall include the Town of Saugus Board of Selectment, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Planning Board as designated by the zoning bylaws for the issuance of special permits. Sub-District. An area within the MCMOD that is geographically smaller than the, than the MCMOD district and differentiated, differentiated from the rest of the district by use dimensional standards or development standards. Subsidized Housing Inventory. SHI. A list of qualified affordable housing units maintained by EOHLC used to measure a community --
reading of it into the minutes, someone could say that they didn't know what they were voting on, which would negate the vote if they went back and looked at the video and we didn't actually present the article in full. So, we will, but when it comes time to vote, I'm not doing this again, so pay attention. All right? The MCMOD is an overlay district composed of three sub-districts that is superimposed over the underlying zoning district. The land included in the MCMOD are the following town of Saugus tax parcels, as well as that portion of the layout of Broadway, Massachusetts Route 1 that abuts the included tax parcels. Under Subdistrict A, on 10D 0002, lots 1, 6, and 12. On 11C 0010, lot 6. On 11D 0001, lot 2. On 11D 0002, lots 9 and 11. Subdistrict B, on 10D 0010, lots 2, 3, 4, and 6. And in Subdistrict C, on 10D 0002, lots 5 and 8. 23.2.2, Effectiveness. The, this MCMOD bylaw shall be effective upon its approval by Saugus Town Meeting, but the election to develop property under the MCMOD zoning hereby created may not be made until such date as EOHLC has issued a finding determining that this MCMOD bylaw fully satisfies the town of Saugus' obligations under Section 3A of the Zoning Act. Applicants seeking to develop land within the MCMOD may elect to be governed by this requirement of the MCMOD or by complying with all applicable requirements of the underlying zoning district. Where an applicant develops, elects to develop land under the MCMOD, said land shall thenceforth, be governed by the provisions of the MCMOD, and neither the applicant nor successors entitled may change such election. Where the MCMOD authorizes use and dimensional controls not otherwise allowed in the underlying district or any applicable overlay district, the provisions of the MCMOD shall control. Section 23.2.3, Underlying Zoning. The MCMOD is an overlay district superimposed on underlying zoning districts of the zoning bylaws. The regulations for use dimensions and all other provisions of the zoning bylaws governing the respective underlying zoning districts shall remain in full force, except as modified or superseded by the MCMOD for uses allowed as of right in the MCMOD. Uses that are not identified in this article are governed solely by the requirements of the underlying zoning district. Subdistricts. The MCMOD contains the following sub-districts as referenced in Section 23.2.1 herein A, B, and C. Density Protection. No other provision or requirements in this zoning bylaw shall reduce the effective density of a multifamily housing project below the units per acre specified in for each sub-district within the MOD in Section 23.5 Dimensional Standards. The planning board shall have the authority to waive or modify any conflicting dimensional site plan review or design standards imposed by other sections of the zoning bylaws if such standards would result in a reduction of the Section 23.5 Dimensional Standards based density for multifamily housing within the MOD. Section 2.4 Building Moratorium Multifamily Dwelling shall not apply to the MCMOD. Section 23.3 Definitions. For purposes of this article, the following definition shall apply. Affordable Unit. A multifamily housing unit that is subject to the use, to a use restriction recorded on its chain of title limiting the sale price or rent, or limiting occupancy to an individual or household of a specified income or both. Affordable Housing. Housing that contains affordable units as defined by this article. Applicant. A person, business, or organization that applies for a building permit, site plan review, or special permit. Area Medium Income. Median Income. The median income, family income for the metropolitan statistical region that includes the town of Saugus as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. As of Right. Development that may proceed under the zoning in place at time of application without the need for a special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. Building Coverage. The maximum area of the lot that can be attributed to the footprints of the built, footprint of the buildings, principal and accessory on that lot, and including any building overhangs that exceed the building footprint. Building coverage does not include surface parking. Compliance Guidelines. Compliance guidelines for multifamily zoning districts under Article 3A of the Zoning Act as further revised or amended from time to time. DCH, I'm sorry, DHCD, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or any successor agency. Development Standards. Provisions of Section G General Development Standards made applicable to projects within the MCMOD. EOHLC, the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, DHCD's successor agency. Lot. An area of land with defined boundaries that is used or available for use as the site of a building or buildings. MBTA, Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. Mixed-Use Development. Development containing a mix of residential uses and non-residential uses, including commercial, institutional, industrial, and other, or other uses. Multifamily Housing. A building with three or more residential dwellings, units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential unit in each building. Multifamily Zoning District. A zoning district, either a base district or an overlay district, in which multiple family housing is allowed as of right. Open Space. Contiguous undeveloped land within a parcel boundary. Parking. Structured. A structure in which vehicle parking is accommodated on multiple stories, a vehicle parking area that is underneath all or part of any story or of a structure, or a vehicle parking area that is not underneath a structure but is entirely covered and has a parking surface at least eight feet below the grade. Structured parking does not include surface parking or carports, including solar carports. Parking. Surface. One or more parking spaces without a built structure above the space, a solar panel designed to be installed above a surface parking space does not count as a built structure for the purpose of this definition. Residential Dwelling Unit. A single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Section 3A. Section 3A of the Zoning Act's Mass. General Laws Chapter 40A. Site Plan Review Authority. The Town of Saugus Planning Board. Special Permit Granting Authority. The special permit granting authority shall include the Town of Saugus Board of Selectment, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Planning Board as designated by the zoning bylaws for the issuance of special permits. Subdistrict. An area within the MCMOD that is geographically smaller than the, than the MCMOD district and differentiated, differentiated from the rest of the district by use dimensional standards or development standards. Subsidized Housing Inventory. SHI. A list of qualified affordable housing units maintained by EOHLC used to measure a community's stock of low or moderate income housing for the purpose of Mass. General Laws Chapter 40B, the comprehensive permit law. Transit Station. An MBTA subway station. Any of the stops along the MBTA red line, green line, orange line, or blue line commuter rail station. Any MBTA commuter rail station with year-round rather than intermittent seasonal or event-based service, or ferry terminal, the location where passengers embark and disembark from regular year-round MBTA ferry service. Zoning Bylaws. The zoning bylaws of the Town of Saugus, Massachusetts, as it may be amended. Zoning Map. The official zoning map of the Town of Saugus, Massachusetts, as it may be amended. Section 23.4, Permitted Uses. 23.4.1, Uses permitted as of right. The following uses are permitted as of right with the, within the MCMOD multifamily housing. Dimensional Requirements. 23.5.1, Table of Dimensional Requirements. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the zoning bylaws, the dimensional requirements applicable in the MCMOD areas follows. For all three sub-districts, A, B, and C. Minimum Lot Size: 20,000 square feet. Minimum Lot Frontage: 20 square, 20 feet. Maximum Height: 35 feet. Maximum Height in Stories: 3. Minimum Open Space: 30%. For maximum residential density per acres, units per acre, Subdistrict A is 21, Subdistrict B is 15, Subdistrict C is 12. The maximum front yard in feet is 20 across the board. Maximum side yard is 20 and, I'm sorry, minimum front yard is 20, minimum side yard is 20, and minimum rear yard is 25 feet. 23.5.2, Multi-Building Lots. In the MCMOD, lots may have more than one principal building, subject to required set back between buildings of the underlying zoning district, if any. Off-Street Parking. These parking requirements are applicable to developments in the MCMOD. The following minimum number of off-street parking spaces shall be permitted by use either in surface parking or within garages or other structures. For multifamily, two for each dwelling unit. For other uses, refer to Article 8. Section 23.6, General Development Standards. Applicability. Development standards in the MCMOD are applicable to all multifamily developments with more than three units within the MCMOD. Site Design. Connections. Sidewalks shall provide direct connections among building entrances, if the public sidewalk, if applicable, bicycle storage, and parking. Vehicular Access. Where feasible, curb cuts shall be minimized and shared driveways encouraged. Screening for Parking. Where feasible, parking shall be located within or under buildings where exterior parking is needed, it shall be screened by a landscape buffer or sufficient width to allow the healthy establishment of tree, shrubs, and perennials, but no less than six feet. The buffer may include a fence or wall of no more than three feet in height unless there is a significant grade change between the parking of the side, and the sidewalk. Plantings. Plantings shall include species that are native or adapted to the region. Plants on the Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List, as may be amended, shall be prohibited. Landscaping shall include a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, and all trees shall be installed at a planting height not less than eight feet. Lighting. The light levels shall meet or exceed the minimum design guidelines defined by our Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, and shall provide illumination necessary for safety and convenience while preventing glare and overspill into adjoining properties and reducing the amount of sky glow. Mechanicals. All mechanical equipment at ground level shall be screened by a combination of noise-dampening fencing and plantings. Rooftop mechanical equipment shall be installed with noise-dampening screening. Dumpsters shall be screened by a combination of fencing and plantings where possible. Dumpsters or other trash and recycling collection points shall be located within the building. Stormwater Management. Strategies that demonstrate compliance of the construction activities and the proposed project with the most current versions of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management Standards, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, Massachusetts' Erosion, Sediment, and Control Guidelines, and, if applicable, additional requirements under the Town of Saugus MS4 Permit for projects that disturb more than one acre and discharge to the town's municipal stormwater system, and an operations and management plan for both the construction activities and ongoing post-construction maintenance and reporting requirements. 23.6.3, Buildings. General. Position relative to the principal street. The primary building shall have its principal facade and entrance facing the principal street. See also Section G7 Buildings Corner Lots. Entries. Where feasible, entries shall be clearly defined and linked to a possible pedestrian network that includes the public sidewalk. Multiple Buildings on a Lot. Parking and circulation on the site shall be organized so as to reduce the amount of impervious surface where possible. Parking and loading areas shall be connected to minimize curb cuts onto public right-of-way, rights-of-way. A paved pedestrian network shall connect parking to the entities to all the buildings and the buildings to each other. The orientation of multiple buildings on a lot should reinforce the relationship among the buildings. All buildings, facades, shall be treated with the same care and attention in terms of entries, fenestration, and materials. The buildings adjacent to the public street shall have a pedestrian entry facing the public street. Shared Outdoor Space. Multifamily housing shall have usable common outdoor space with programmed amenities that all residents can access. Such spaces may be located in a combination of ground floor, courtyard, rooftop, or terrace. Buildings. Corner Lots. A building on a corner lot shall indicate a primary entrance either, either along one of the side-facing facades or on the primary corner as an entrance serving both streets. Such entry shall be connected by a paved surface to the public sidewalk, if applicable. All facades visible from a public right-of-way shall be treated with similar care and attention in terms of entries, fenestration, and materials. Fire Exits. Serving more than one story shall not be located on either side of the street-facing facade. 23.6.7, Buildings. Principal Facade and Parking. Parking shall be subordinate in design and location to the principal building facade and comply with the following performance standards. Surface Parking. Shall be located to the rear or side of the principal building. Parking shall not be located in the setback between the building and any of the lot line adjacent to the public right-of-way. Integrated Garages. The principal pedestrian entry into the building shall be more prominent in design and placement than the veh, than the vehicular entry into the garage. Parking Structures. Buildings dedicated to structured parking on the same lot or as one or more multifamily buildings or mixed-use development shall be subordinate in design and placement to the multifamily or mixed-use buildings on the lot. Parking Levels or Structures shall be designed with a residential feel. Walls along the 20, longer than, walls longer than 20 feet shall be broken up with building design elements, color changes, windows, et cetera. No open podium parking structures are permitted. Upon the request of the applicant and subject to compliance with Section 3A and 760 CMR 72, the Site Plan Authority may waive the requirements of Section 23.6 upon a finding of consistency of such variation with the overall purpose and objectives of the MCMOD. Requests for waivers shall be outlined in all MCMOD project applications and noted on project plans. In considering whether to grant waivers, the Site Plan Review Authority may require additional conditions and requirements in order to mitigate project impacts. Affordability Requirements. The provisions in Article 15 of the zoning bylaws include, inclusionary housing requirements shall apply to developments in MCMOD. Section 23.8, Site Plan Review. The provisions in Section 12.6 of the zoning bylaws, Site Plan Review, shall apply to developments in MCMOD, except as modified herein. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in Section 12.6, any and all time standard set forth in said Section 12.6 shall be subject to modification at the reasonable discretion of the planning board in its exercise of Site Plan Review, including without limitation the time to open a public hearing, to conduct said public hearing and close same, and to issue a final Site Plan Review decision. Nothing in this provision shall permit extensions of time that are unreasonable. Any objection with respect to time standards may be made through an appeal to the Town of Saugus Zoning Board of Appeals. In its exercise of Site Plan Reviews under the MCMOD, the planning board shall have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations specific to MCMOD Site Plan Review. In its exercise of Site Plan Reviews under the MCMOD, the planning board shall have the authority to retain at the applicant's sole expense third-party consultants to assist and advise the planning board as to Site Plan Review applications. In the event that such an election is made, any all-applicable stand, time standard shall be stayed until the applicant has remitted payment in full for all retained third-party consultancy fees. The planning board may condition Site Plan Approval upon compliance with reasonable conditions in order to mitigate adverse project impacts on nearby property, on nearby properties, provided said conditions are reasonable and do not unduly render housing development uneconomic. Where a condition is objected to by an applicant on the basis of economic impact, the applicant shall file with the planning board an itemized project pro forma which may be peer-reviewed at the applicant's expense. Filing Requirements. In addition to any filing requirements of the underlying zoning district in which property to be developed under the MCMOD may be subject, project Site Plan Review applicants shall contain, applications shall contain, without limitation, ten copies of the following. A, Complete Civil Architectural Structural MEP and Landscaping Plan sufficiently detailed for the issuance of building and foundation permits with all plans stamped by Massachusetts' Registered Professionals. B, Site Survey Plan, stamped by a Massachusetts Registered Professional Land Surveyor and based on a field survey completed within 12 months of the project application. C, Traffic Impact Study, prepared by a Certified Professional Traffic Operations Engineer, including turning movement plans demonstrating site accessibility to the town's largest emergency vehicle site, largest emergency vehicle and sightline plans to demonstrate sufficient SSD and ISD at the site driveways. D, Stormwater Management Report, demonstrating compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal stormwater management standards. E, Comprehensive Site Operations and Management Plan detailing, without limitation, how the site will be managed with respect to traffic, access, parking, loading, snow removal, solid waste management and maintenance. F, Comprehensive Construction Management Plan. Prior to filing a project application for MCMOD Site Plan Review, applicants shall contact the planning board to request if additional paper copies of the foregoing documents must be filed. All project submissions shall be, also be filed electronically. The foregoing documents shall be considered the minimum filing requirements for a complete MCMOD Site Plan Review Application unless waived by the planning board upon an applicant's showing of good cause why a particular document is not necessary for a particular MCMOD project or a particular filing requirement would be unduly burdensome. During the course of the planning board's review of MCMOD projects, the planning board shall have at the discretion to require additional documents to be filed by applicants as may be deemed reasonably necessary. An MCMOD Site Plan Review applicant shall not be deemed to be filed, application shall not be deemed to be filed until this section has been fully complied with. Filing Fees. The planning board shall establish a schedule of fees for applications for MCMOD Site Plan Review. Consultant Review. Upon receipt of an application for MCMOD Site Plan Review, the planning board may engage professional and technical consultants at the applicant's cost to assist with its review of the application in accordance with the requirements of Section 53G of Chapter 44 of the Mass. General Laws. The planning board may direct the applicant to deposit funds with the planning board for such review at the time the application is accepted, and to add additional funds as needed upon notice. Failure to comply with this section shall be grounds for denying the application. Any excess amount in the account attributed to that project, including any interest accrued, shall be repaid to the applicant per their written request. Severability. If any provision of this article is found to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this, of sections shall not be affected but shall remain in full force. The invalidity of any provision of this article shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the zoning bylaws. Compliance. If any provision of this bylaw or any underlying provision of the zoning bylaws is formally determined by EOHLC to be inconsistent with the requirements of Section 3A to allow multifamily housing as of right in the MCMOD, the planning board shall have the authority to waive strict compliance with said conflicting provision. This bylaw shall be effective immediately upon the formal issuance by EOHLC of a determination of final unconditional district compliance pursuant to 760 CMR 72.09, 09.7. I do have a, there's a map attached to this with, I think all of you should have a copy of. Do we have a second on Article 1?
Yes.
All right, moved and seconded. I do have a recommendation from the planning board. The Saugus Planning Board held a public meeting on this back on May 29th, and they voted unanimously to recommend the passage of this article. So, moved and seconded at this time. Do we have any discussion on Article 1? Yes. Come on up.
John O'Brien, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1, Chairman of the Planning Board. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to provide a summary of the planning board's review and recommendations regarding Article 1, which was proposed as establishing an MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, or an MCMOD in Saugus. The board held a public hearing on May 29th with a quorum present. At the hearing, we heard testimony from Town Manager, our land use consultant, and special counsel. Under the law, specifically Section 3A, Chapter 48, the town is required by to create zoning that allows for the right multifamily housing development. The state deadline for the compliance is Ju, July 14th, 2025. If we fail to comply, the town would face serious risk, potential costly litigation from the Attorney General, and the likely loss of eligibility for a range of students and state funding. The proposed overlay district is carefully targeted. It covers 13 parcels along Route 1 that are already developed or approved for multifamily mixed use, or commercial uses. The approach allows us to meet state requirements without opening up any new areas of the town to unwanted or inconsistent development. It also helps reserve our single-family neighborhood by focusing on new housing opportunities along Route 1 corridor. After considering the testimony of legal requirements, the planning board voted unanimously four to zero to recommend passage of Article 1. In summary, Article 1 will bring Saugus into compliance with the state mandate. It will avoid legal and financial risk and do so in a way that is consistent with our community planning goals. We respectfully recommend the town meeting vote yes on Article 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any further discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Just to kind of, I know we've had a lot of opportunities over the last few weeks to meet and discuss this. I'm thankful for the Town Meeting Members for making their time available. We also had a public hearing outside of that with the planning board. I know we did send a link to Town Meeting Members that weren't able to view that or make one of the meetings to try to help keep people educated and informed. In summary, this is obviously not, you know, a great situation for any city or town to be in, as you've watched the news over the last couple of years. You know, there's other communities that are fighting this legally, and I think we talked about this in some of the meetings, like Milton spent over a million dollars in litigation, and the courts have ruled that the statute is enforce, the statute is legal and constitutional, just that it wasn't enforceable for some technicality of some public meetings or notices, which the state has now sort of cleaned up. We're now in a situation where all cities and towns, I think there's 170-s somewhat communities that have to have this in place by, I think it's July 14th or 15th. Otherwise, we'll be out of compliance. With the goal, just to kind of talk about it a little bit, the MBTA community zoning, as we've heard, is required. It's a state law. It's mandated for cities and towns served by the MBTA to adopt zoning that allows for right, by right, multifamily housing development. The town's goal with the zoning article is to get credit for housing that is already built, approved, or is in development, in the development pipeline. So, one of the things I think, you know, it's hit us a little hard because we've already sort of advocated and had development and had housing through a housing production plan that we put together. And I think that this coming along and requiring us to put another 1,000-plus units is a challenge. So, one of the goals with the, we went and hired a consultant that specializes in this as well as using town council and special counsel that deals with land use. He's a land use expert. And we've been looking at this and monitoring over the last year, year and a half, trying to see how this would play out with other towns and cities, how the lawsuits strategically, what would best suit us as a community. And again, the goal of the article was to get credit for the housing that's already been, been done or already built, already in the pipeline and approved, so that we can meet the state's requirements without opening the door to unplanned, unexpected, or inappropriate new development. It's always a challenge if the state, you know, this, and I guess- It's always a challenge if the state, you know, this, and I guess, I think everybody's aware of this, right? We have a national housing crisis and obviously a state housing crisis as well. And one of those things is from a policy standpoint, they're trying to push this onto cities and towns to absorb that. But these type of zoning requirements are far-reaching. The legislature voted this, giving the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities a real broad authority to implement this, and I think it went further than what everybody thought legislatively and the legislators. But it definitely has an impact on us as a community, and this can actually take, you know, change the character of the community we live in very quickly in other communities. Everybody's in the sort of the similar situation. By creating this overlay district on Route One away from established residential neighborhoods, we are taking a targeted approach that protects the character of our community. If, if we don't comply with this, and I think you heard a little bit about that, by the state's deadline, which is, I think, July fourteenth or fifteenth, the town faces the risk of lawsuits by the Attorney General, Attorney General's Office, which has contacted my office as well as Town Council numerous times over the last few months to see where we were with this, including, I think, up until yesterday, John, correct? Asking where we are if this has been approved. And we also, that would obviously be costly and difficult to defend. Additionally, we run the risk of losing access to key state grants and other funding sources. While no plan is perfect, and this one isn't perfect either, I think that this approach that we took, took based on input from all different departments and residents and Town Meeting as well, of knowing we want to protect our community, this plan, I think, minimizes that risk of unwanted development and brings us in compliance so we can at least move forward and protect the town's future and put this behind us. So this isn't a great situation, but I think, considering all the factors, I think this, you know, putting this up on Route One and overlaying in areas that have already been developed or already approved, I think, you know, so, and I think we've talked about this, but just in case people don't understand it, if somebody's just built a hundred-million-dollar project, they're not going to now rip it down to do, to, you know, to use, to develop this under this new bylaw zoning. And understand this, if they're already approved for, say, three hundred units on that parcel, and there may be, I think we have one of the examples where I think the Hilltop Development, I think, can add eighteen, eighteen units. So there's already units there. It's not like if everything got approved, it's a thousand more units. If they only can add eighteen units at that, at that location, what's the financial feasibility of, you know, reconstructing that, having to go through the Planning Board, tearing the development they just spent a hundred million dollars on just to get eighteen more units? So I think those are the things that we strategically looked at. I think this is the best of what we could get. Again, this is like a cook, I think I used the example, making a soup or doing a budget. A hundred people would give a hundred different opinions and think, you know, do this or do that. But I think overall, obviously, I live in the community as well, I think that this will get us into compliance, and we'll have to see what the state does next. And I appreciate, again, everybody's time and, and coming to the meetings where we try to give information, coming to the Planning Board, and also the calls I received and questions. So thank you. Hopefully, we can get this approved and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article One? If you would, please introduce yourself to the folks at home.
Carrie Hogan, eleven Maple Street. I personally see no benefit for our town by passing this, but I understand that due to the overreach of the state, we have almost no option but to comply. I look at this and I see a bill that is designed to improve walkability and limit vehicles, but this has a requirement of a minimum of two cars per unit, potentially twenty-six-hundred cars on Route One on top of it. I look at this and I see the impact to the schools that are already bursting at the scene. I'm worried about our police, who are already understaffed, firefighters, emergency services and whatnot. But mainly, I see no benefit to the residents. I see one thousand one hundred and sixty-three units, and the residents here are, just like everybody else in the nation, we're facing a housing crisis too. I would like to see something that was worked into this in some way, shape, or form that would give at least a benefit to residents, that would give them first crack at the apartments at the bare minimum. We're all struggling with housing too. But I would like to say no and say, let's be one of the towns that fights this. I know that's something this town isn't going to do. It's incredibly disheartening to have an article that is so impactful to our town, and we have, I think, seven members of the public and twelve absent meeting members. So I know you're working with the best that you can do, and I know that this is going to pass, but I just wanted to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Any further discussion on Article One? Yes, Mr. Costello.
Martin Costello, Precinct Ten. I'm not going to go into all the hypotheticals here because we'd be here all night, and I know we don't want to do that. But my only concern as we go forward here is the fact that we're somewhat in uncharted territory as we proceed with this MCMOD decision. That being, for my part, that the Town of Saugus, the Town Manager, the Planning Board will have a significant influence on how the applicants proceed with the projects that they want to initiate along the corridors where they are, where they want to develop. So I just want to have it on the record that the Town Manager, the Planning Board, the Board of Selectment of this town are going to have significant influence as we move forward on this, so that we don't get into a situation where we have a Wild West situation with development along the corridors where the MCMOD projects are supposed to commence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Any further discussion on Article One? Yes, Mr. Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. I know I've spoken to some of you, and you're certainly not happy about this. I'm not either, but I think strategically, the consultants, the manager, the attorney, they did a good job in putting this together. It uses existing housing that's already been built on Route One. It doesn't have any impact in town, in our neighborhoods. If you remember not too long ago, there was a proposal to try to put this type of housing in Cliftondale Square. And I can assure you, I fought that, and I got the support of Town Meeting Members after Cliftondale Square. I wouldn't be surprised if they offered this type of development in Saugus Center after Cliftondale. So I think this is really the best option for the town. I think they did a good job, and it protects our neighborhood and keeps our town, the character of our town is a small town. It's all right on Route One. What are we going to do? So I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sereno. Any further discussion on Article One? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the question. Just as a point of information, because of a law passed by Governor Baker, although this is a zoning bylaw change, because it involves multifamily units, it only requires a fifty percent majority to pass, a simple majority as opposed to a two-thirds. So we'll try this with a voice vote and see where we go from there. If necessary, we can go to hand or roll call. But all in favor of Article One, and I'll read it one more, no, I'm only kidding. To see if the Town of Saugus will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Saugus by adding a new Article twenty-three, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCOD, for the purpose of complying with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, subsection three A, as we just laid out. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying yes.
If you have a roll call vote, I ask for a roll call vote. I'm telling you why, I just thought we have, we have a little, take one, something that will lead you, so much, we want to do this, so we won't say.
Yeah, if it came to question, we were planning that anyway. But on that, we'll have a roll call vote. When the clerk calls your name, if you're in favor of this article, signify by saying yes or yea. If you're opposed, no or nay. Thank you.
Bartolo.
No.
Bell is not here. Berube.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Camuso.
Yes.
Jacoris.
Yes.
Connors is not here. Costello.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Delios.
Yes.
Doherty, Dunn is not here. Federico.
Yes.
Ferrari.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Grabowski.
Yes.
Herman Durand.
Yes.
Hickman. Kelly is not here. Long.
Yes.
LaPreste is not here. Minugian.
Yes.
McCarthy is not here. McCullough.
Yes.
Meredith.
Yes.
Mareschi.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Paleshi is not here. Palumba.
Yes.
Panetta.
Yes.
Panico.
Yes.
Peolini is not here. Corlente.
Yes.
Rikinic.
Yes.
Ring.
Yes.
Rosetti.
No.
Sacco is not here. Shenna.
Yes.
Scuzzarella.
Yes.
Schalkowsky.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Straznick is not here. Taligan is not here. Thompson is not here. Wallace.
Yes.
Whitcomb.
Yes.
Worthling.
Yes.
The votes are thirty, thirty-five yea, two nays, twelve absents.
All right, so Article One has passed thirty-five to two. With that, we've wrapped up all of the business before us for this summer session. For those of you, I hope everybody has a great summer, and for those of you planning to run for reelection for your seats, best of luck, and I hope to see you all back here next year. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's special. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All.
Silly question. Anyone opposed? All right. Have a great night, folks. Have a great summer. Thank you.